All right, good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, March 8th, 2021 at 7:01 PM at the Downers Grove Village Hall. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Hannes is absent. Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Samati.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. Members of the public who are viewing remotely may provide a public comment by calling 630-743-4085 and recording their comment. Comments will be accepted until we reach the public comment portion of the agenda. We will play all comments submitted remotely in the order in which they were received. I have allotted 30 minutes for public comment tonight.
We also do have public comment cards out somewhere, right, Melissa? Where are those at?
Yeah, they are out right in the hall.
Up there by the door. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and start off today as we always do with the flag salute and the pledge of allegiance. We're welcoming Elsierra School with Principal Lynn.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jason Lynn, the principal from Elsierra. I'm excited to be here to talk about Elsierra tonight, and we have a virtual flag salute from our students, so I'm going to get that up here.
We are the student council officers of Elsierra School.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Stay safe and healthy.
We're very proud of our student council. We just got up and running in February, and already we had a big event where our student council was able to have students across the whole school design and make Valentines that we sent out to seniors. This was an operation that was led by State Senator John Curran, and we were able to make over 200, right around 200 Valentines to the seniors. So that was pretty cool for them to be able to do that so quickly. And you'll see there, there's a virtual Zoom meeting for all our student council officers and building, I'm sorry, and classroom reps. That's pretty nice to be able to see that they're excited about some of the events we have coming up. Some of the old things that we've had in the past, like our Bobcat Fridays, are getting started up again this month. They're coming up with some pretty creative things to keep the students pretty excited about student council. So, big thanks to them.
Good morning, Elsierra School. Here are the announcements for the week of February 22nd.
Look at that, just one second. So, the exciting part really as a principal is that we're working hard to be able to have all our families connected. We have some of our students, as you know, that are remote in sections that are schools. So, one of the things we want to be able to do, and I think all principals have really jumped on board with this, is to create announcements each week. And one of the nice parts about that is the intention for that was for our remote students to still stay connected to the school, but a lot of our onsite students, especially our upper grades, have said, hey, can't we watch those announcements too? Which makes me feel good about the content that I'm putting out. So, I wanted to show this to everybody here to be able to see. These are examples of what our announcements look like.
Good morning, Elsierra School. Here are the announcements for the week of February 22nd. We're very excited about our Math Spirit Week coming up this week. Here is a list of all the fun things that you can do this week. We hope that you work hard at math, not just for this week, but for the whole year. I thought it was pretty cool to see an actual Bobcat at Elsierra last week, helping us out with all the snow. Yep, that's the machine, the Bobcat. We'd like to wish happy birthday to the following people this week. Don't forget that we have Picture Day on Wednesday this week. And now it's time for our Joke of the Week. Knock, knock. Who's there? Cow goes. Cow goes, "Hoo." No, cow goes, "Moo." Have a great week.
So, you get a little bit of laughs back with that. The funny thing about that is like, those are things that, you know, the kids get to see me as a principal in a different light, obviously, you know, an animated form there. But the idea really about that is that it's just a little bit of something to kind of, there's a stressful time and stuff like that for everybody, relieve a little bit of that, but also help that connection be there. Something I've enjoyed doing throughout the course of the year, and really that whole idea of being connected. We see there, we're not the biggest school, but you know, we have around 260 students, about 40 staff. That's a lot of people to stay connected, but it also, one of the things we really thrive on at Elsierra is that, you know, family feel. We want to keep that going there. So, that's kind of why I kept that there to highlight, plus to give you a fun joke. The other thing is you really work hard to create that new normal. One of the big things for me as a principal, I always love to give high fives, you know, to our students, you know, as they come into the building, as they leave the building, as they get off the bus and off the bus, all those types of things. I didn't want to be a super spreader this year, so I had to stop doing that. So, we exchanged high fives for temperature checks, and that was one of the things, the day end of the year, you know, as I'm greeting students instead of the high five, it's with my hand to their forehead, you know, to check their temperature. But, you know, that became a new normal pretty quick. You know, we went from, you know, young students to kind of being nervous about that, to them just kind of embracing that this was that new normal. But I'm glad that we're not still doing that, by the way. The other part is like, being creative with all the different spaces that we have in the building. At Elsierra, we have a lot of flexibility with, you know, without having brick and mortar walls on the inside of the building, having a lot of flexibility to move our walls. But we also had a spot where we needed to be a little more creative. And you'll see there in the middle picture there is our old stage that turned into a second grade classroom. It was really neat to be able to see how quick that turnaround happened and how creative, if you give, you know, a teacher an opportunity to be creative with some parameters, what she's able to do. And that's one of the things that I've been really impressed with all of our teachers at Elsierra. You'll see there, Mr. Zach, our PE teacher, teaching a Zoom PE lesson. Right behind him there, you'll see there's like a little closet that he should just be the storage. Now, that was really his small gym, that we would call it, where he'd be teaching a lot of his Zoom lessons from. So, things like that, then need to be able to see just how well the staff has adapted and how they've embraced all the different changes that have come across to them this year. Very excited about having dual language back at Elsierra when the program first started, the first year it was at Elsierra, and then because of space issues, it moved, and now because of space issues, we're back at Elsierra. And it's been wonderful to have both teachers teaching two grade levels. We have a kindergarten in first grade being taught, and then we also have second and third grade being taught. I always feel like we have dual language, and I get a promotion because the students refer to me as El Director, and that's kind of a neat term instead of being the principal all the time. So, but the students have been wonderful. Talking about teachers that have been adapted to different learning, you know, styles and things like that. They went from, you know, being in a closed classroom to being in an open school building, but then also they're both teaching concurrently right now, where they have students in remote and students are onsite, teaching simultaneously. So, to see that effort on their part on a daily basis has been very impressive as well. Some of the really neat things that have happened this year at Elsierra, we have, we were trying to figure out a way, how can we raise some money for some of our needy families around the holidays? And one of our parents came up with the idea, what if we have, I got a Buddy the Elf costume. What if I dress up as Buddy the Elf and we have him drive by, where parents can drop off gift cards for our families in need? We thought, we'll do that on a Friday and see what kind of, you know, money we can make. And we thought maybe raise a couple hundred dollars. In reality, we raised thousands of dollars, being able to do that. Gift cards, we gave to a lot of the needy families, not only just for the holidays, but throughout the course of the rest of this year, which is nice. So, that was a fun event where families were able to just drive up and give a gift card and see Buddy the Elf and take a picture with him. So, that was a lot of fun. The last two years, we've been fortunate to be able to have a math night. Katie Herkis was our interventionist last year, and she was able to put that together for an in-person event. And then this year, we have Mrs. O'Wolzak, and she was able to get a grant to be able to have that as a virtual event this year. And honestly, like, the virtual event, we got a lot of positive feedback from families just because it was very interactive for the whole family, but she didn't have the noise of being a gym to be able to do a lot of those games. So, that actually might be one event, even if we are in person with events in the future, that we might look at a virtual option moving forward with that, too. The big news at Elsierra, as you all know, is our new playground. This was something that, if you asked me five years ago, how long is it going to take for us to be able to raise the money to get that? I might have said is, hopefully before I retire. But, in all honesty, our PTA has really stepped up the last few years in fundraising, but then last year, you know, the big thing was really getting that grant from Representative Ann Stoppa Murray and the graphic state of Illinois to be able to get this playground moving. With the mild December, if you remember back in December, we didn't have a lot of snow at that point, we were able to get a lot of the construction done, and the playground is pretty close to being finished. It's just really right now the finishing touches. So, you see the picture right there of, on the right there is what the playground looked like when we had some snow on the ground, but it's pretty close to being done. And the kids are really waiting with pated breath right now to be able to get on that playground and play on it. But, the thing for me right now is that as I look at it, I'm just very proud. I think as a lot of the families walk by, and they're saying that they can't wait for this playground to be, you know, up and running, and for us to be able to have this as soon as possible is amazing. I'm going to turn things over here in just a second to one of our PTA executive board members. But I want to highlight right there is, last year was our 50th anniversary, so this is a picture from pre-COVID, so just know that it's not so distant in that, but it was a huge celebration, not only just for Elsierra, but for the entire community. We had lots of families that were from the first class of, you know, coming through Elsierra back in 1969, were able to come through there. We were in the time capsule, and it was just an amazing, you know, fun event. There's a drone that we had here taking a picture of, you know, everything that happened, and we look back at that, and I'm so thankful that we were able to do that, you know, in the last school year compared to if that celebration would have taken place this year. So, right now, I'm going to turn it over to Katie Thomas. She's one of our executive board members, and she's got some great things to say about PTA.
Hello. So, like Jason was just talking about, the big goal of the PTA is just being part of that partnership, and that's what is so amazing about Elsierra, is that we're just trying to work together for the best education for our students. And so, on the next slide here, just like all of you, the word of the year has been pivot. So, we have been trying to take the things that we were doing before and pivot them into something that would work for the environment we're in right now. So, some things we're really proud of is providing instructional supports to our amazing staff members. So, providing that scholastic news lets the kids know what's going on in the world right now, which they all need, and just that extra little reading exposure. Field trips, again, it's a pivot. It'll be a virtual historical perspective for kids this year, but still allows our students to have that extra educational enrichment, and trying to take things like our birthday book program, and how can we do that in a safe and socially distanced way, but still be able to celebrate with books. And again, we're pivoting even with our social events. So, what was a Fall Fest became a virtual dance party with Coach Josh, and the kids were dancing at home, but they were so excited to be able to interact in Zoom in a fun way, see their classmates, and again, really feel excited about things that are going on at school. We took our normal breakfast with Santa and changed it into socially distanced pictures with Santa. Still got to see the big guys, still got to feel like you've got that connection with your school, but in a new reinvented way.
This was an election year for us in November, so one of the things we wanted to do was to be able to, as voters came into the building, into the gym, to have some positive things in the building, so that they're sitting there kind of waiting, that they'd be able to see what Elsierra is all about. So, Katie helped us, you know, create some things that the kids could put up on CSO, and then we print those out and put them in throughout the gym. So, I picked three of these ones here for us to be able to show you. This is, what was your favorite thing about Elsierra? And one of the students says there that, I like every teacher, that, I'm sorry, I like that every teacher helps us with every subject that we need help with. That's one of the great things we want to be able to see. The middle one's really funny there, where it says, is a, is a great place to learn, and that I love that, I can't read for life, it says here, I love that.
I love Elsierra so much.
Oh, yeah. I never want to leave. That's the part there, and I love that, too, because obviously, we want kids to feel connected, but we also want them to feel like they don't ever have to leave either. The other one there really captures, you know, the middle part there where it says, there are no walls which helps keep students quiet. That's one of the things that I can't tell you enough, whenever I give tours to parents that are incoming, you know, they want to see about Elsierra, in fact, when I could give tours, I would, you know, tell them, really, Elsierra is a lot more like a library than it is a gym, where you're going to walk in there, you're not going to hear, you know, loud craziness and things like that. It's really going to be a lot more like a library, and it has students actually recognize that means a lot. This year, I will tell you, with being socially distanced, six feet apart with masks, and noise volume is a little bit more than we've had in the past, just because there's a lot more space being used to get about voices being heard. But in a normal year, definitely more like a library than a gym. We asked the staff to do the same thing. This is a question I have in my newsletter, and both of the student council sponsors right there, Mrs. Nkrasi and then Mrs. Marquez, they talk about, they love the students. I also really enjoy the open setting. I've learned so much from getting to see my coworkers in action. That's one of the benefits that teachers really talk about year in, year out with the open model, is that they are able to capture, you know, a few minutes and watch what their other peers are doing in rooms near them. The other part there, I think, is really nice with Mrs. Marquez, she's one of our resource teachers, the people, we have the best students, families, and staff, and this is somebody that works with multiple grade levels, you know, and with students over multiple years, and working with multiple families over multiple years. So, and then Mr. Bennett, right there, is one of our sixth grade teachers, you know, he talks about the open format, how it allows for collaboration with colleagues and enables me to maintain relationships with students throughout the building. We always share about, you know, the teachers talking about each other, being able to see each other in action, but it really hit me when he talked about being able to connect with students over multiple years, because you really do get to see students in, you know, other classes after you've had them, or students that are coming up to you and things like that, and building those relationships early on, and I think that really does help that family feel within our building. Asking some of the families, what are their favorite things about Elsierra? You can see there that Mr. Thomas here says that, you know, my favorite thing about Elsierra, the chance of being an active member of the school, that's one of the things we really look for with that outreach with our families. He's talked about our watchdogs program, which is, the dad's a great student. We haven't been able to do that this year, but it's something we look forward to, being able to have those parent volunteers coming in more in the future. In the middle there, Mrs. Bolbianco talks about, best thing at Elsierra is a sense of community, even during this pandemic, the interaction between parents, students, and teachers has been amazing, and it's a true testament to how close knit this school community is. And then you can see right there, Mrs. Roback says here that, we love this family-like atmosphere at Elsierra, and knowing that our child's teachers truly care about him and his learning. Those are things that, you know, from day one, we want our families to feel that, and the fact that they're willing to share that with you guys tonight means a lot to me. We always talk about, you know, so what are the challenges? I think it's sunshine and roses, you know, at every school, and Elsierra is no different. You know, one of the things for us, the conversations that we keep working on, how do we improve our test scores? You know, that's one of the things that is always the elephant in the room in conversations. And with that, I feel a lot of that heavy lifting has been done in terms of us being fully aligned, we want to have our curriculum the same as all the other schools in the district. But the other part about that, you know, is that having that belief that every student can learn challenging material. That's one of the things that we really had a big focus on these last few years, really leveling that playing field for when the students do take that state test, that it's not the first time they've seen that kind of format of a test, that giving them opportunities that they can feel successful. And the teachers have done a nice job with that. As we move forward with whatever tech plays ahead with testing, I do feel confident that we're closing that gap. The other part there is a fluctuating enrollment. You see the size of Elsierra, 260 students, and some levels, hey, that's great. On other levels, it means that, you know, the moving of three kids in and out of a grade might mean that we have two sections, or might mean that we have one section. Because of that, there's a lot of fluidity, not only with our teaching staff, the grade levels that they teach, but also having that ownership of, this is my grade level and my content that I've been teaching for a number of years. As a principal, my answer is, what also gives you that perspective of being able to teach the grade level below or teach the grade level above you, so you have a better perspective of, you know, that continuum. But if you ask any teacher, most of them would prefer to be teaching the same level multiple years, to kind of get that depth there. So, those are some of the things that we kind of continually work on. As a building principal, I do my best so that we don't have people moving over the grade levels all the time, but unfortunately, it does happen, fluctuating enrollment. And the last part there, this is some of the sidewalk talk beginning of the year. Here we have, together but six feet apart, you know, stronger together but six feet apart, and that, that's something that I really do feel like, you know, just those messages of positive, positivity from our PTA, from our families, from our students and our staff, really, we're doing the best that we can right now, and we plan for some of these upcoming shifts and things like that. There's a lot of positivity, but also a lot of, you know, apprehension of, how do we make all this work? And if we stay together, we definitely can be stronger, and I think that's kind of the message we want to send forth. But thank you very much for letting me present about the great things at Elsierra and some of the things that we're working on, and I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you as well. It's great to have the PTAs back. It's been a while since we've had a PTA presentation here in person, so we really, we really do appreciate it.
I think you're our first one, Ms. Thomas, back, so thank you. It's good to see you.
All right, first up in our non-action reports is a spotlight on our school. We're going to talk about staffing and programs of instruction with Dr. Yuzentas.
Hello?
Hello. All right, we have a brief presentation tonight, really to update the board on the plans thus far for 2021, 2022, related to enrollment and staffing. And then, the thought would be, as we have more information, we certainly will update the board then, April, May, and June, and ongoing process.
So, a couple of points about staffing as we go into any presentation. First off, before I get too deep, I always want to thank Dr. Yuzentas. She does a wonderful job. When you think about 13 schools and all the different employees we have, and the different employee groups, and trying to fit them all together, it becomes a very complicated puzzle. Oftentimes, it's long weekends and nights, so thank you for all of your efforts to make everything work and rework numerous times throughout the school year. We really appreciate it. As both Jane and I will tell you, staffing constantly evolves as we look at school districts. With the influx of technology, with pandemics, with all these different things that come forward in a school year, we add, add, add on, and then we have to reevaluate what positions are no longer needed or as effective as they once were, because we're constantly evolving in school districts, or at least we should be evolving in school districts to meet the needs of our children. Budget also has a big impact on staffing. I think all of us as superintendents, we could probably spend three times what the budget is if we had our way, but we do have a budget, and we have to abide by the budget, and this year is a challenge because of the significant hit that the pandemic has had on our budget, you know, with things like transportation or just all the extra expenditures that we've had. We also have to be very cognizant of restrictions with learning models in our limited space in our buildings and the impact that they may have. So, Keep is a very good example of that. Student enrollment will fluctuate. So, this year, we saw some families opt for private school, we saw other families come in, and we may continue to see that until things can level out. One of the things that we want to emphasize tonight is that we're carefully reviewing all of our positions, our allocations, and our systems to identify efficiencies while maximizing our effectiveness. So, regardless of if we're in a tight budget, every single school year, the administration should be bringing to the Board of Education ways to become more efficient and more effective as a school district. And so, Jane's going to dive a little deeper.
All right, as we look back to almost a year ago, last May, this slide was presented in May 2020, and really based on the work through various working groups, through the strategic plan process. We set the goal to restructure our models and again, more, to more effectively, more efficiently and effectively provide that quality instruction and support for our students across all of our district and county schools. And so, again, this is going, a year ago, really targeting special education as one example, looking at our district self-contained programs versus the number of students who are outplaced and looking for those opportunities where we can hold, have special programs within our schools and bring some of our students back, and we were very successful in doing so. We want to continue to develop those in district programs in future years as well. We set that goal of really very closely looking at our K-6 class organizations, working towards those lower class sizes. Our board, as you know, added positions last year and the prior to continue to bring down those class sizes to be more manageable, which allows much more flexibility for our staff in what instruction looks like and how we can support our kids in being more effective with instruction. We dedicated time and dollars to our intervention services and looked at reorganizing and restructuring, again, to try to be more efficient and more effective. A year ago, we did add interventionist positions. We have, what we call our interventionists, we would have resource teachers, our special education teachers, as well as reading specialists, and then added an interventionist position as well, multiple positions going into the school year, and really looking how we can support students differently. The thought with that plan in that model was to then continue to look for opportunities to expand that model in future years. And then the fourth bullet is looking at our math instruction and that model for acceleration. At that point, a year ago, we had, you know, different schools were handling acceleration differently, just because of our, the way our staffing model, and we're figuring out, developing a plan that really was more consistent across all schools. For example, the sixth grade accelerated math students being taught, all of them being taught by a middle school teacher. So, as our team began to dig in for 2021, 22, excuse me, we really wanted to provide some time tonight to, again, reiterate some of those priorities and update our board on, you know, these were our plans at the very beginning. We absolutely feel it's a priority to maintain those class size targets that were established by the Resources Review Council, if not even improve upon them. So, our K-2 classrooms, we are looking for that staffing to have 24 or fewer students, and then in grades three through eight, that 26 or fewer. Again, the target is to hit that goal in 80% of our classes. We want to keep increasing that percentage to bring those class sizes across all of our schools in as many classrooms as possible. We are continuing that priority of maintaining those quality programs of instruction, as well as the consistency, which came up quite a bit throughout the strategic plan process, the equity of opportunities for our children, as well as consistency across our schools. And so, our elementary, our art, music, PE, library instruction maintain, remains a priority. We would like consistent programs in all of our elementary schools. If you think back, it's art once a week, music once a week, library instruction, as well as that book advisory in our library program. PE instruction is two to three times per week, depending on that grade level, with primary, main two times a week, and then intermediate classes at three times a week. Looking at our EL services, and again, making sure we can provide those opportunities for all the children in all of our schools, a consistent opportunity. This last year, and then going into this next year, really look closely at our gifted program and how do we, how we are differentiating instruction for our children to making sure we are meeting the needs of our gifted, as well as our accelerated students. And then again, that priority of looking at math acceleration, developing a consistent model across all of our schools as to what level we're funding. So, we continue into other priorities. That third bullet is really focusing on the curriculum development and implementation. There's been a lot of work in that area. We want to continue the work in that area and stress the importance of the support for our teachers through our coordinators and our instructional coaches. As we came into this school year, we really built a model of district-wide support for all elementary classroom teachers in the area of math, in all classrooms, all schools. That's corporate provided by, again, coaches and coordinators, and then we want to continue to build on that and develop for this year. And then dedicating, dedicating that ongoing professional learning time, which we were unable to do during this school year because of the pandemic. We want to bring that back. You'll see later in this agenda that is in the calendar, the recommended calendar for next year. Additional priorities, again, is looking at our special education programs and services, looking at, making sure we have that equitable opportunity across our schools and maintaining the high-quality services that we have. Looking at, looking closely and prioritizing our student support services with consistency across our schools, meaning our nurses, the RNCSM model, we absolutely want to continue to have a nurse in every school. The RNCSM model, we absolutely want to continue to have a nurse in every school five days per week. Maybe a nurse, an RN, or a certified school nurse, but at least have that one. Having a nurse five days a week is, in fact, one of the all. Building on the social work psychologist model and continuing that high level of support with the mental health clinicians, as well as the social or the special education support. Our psychologists, we have expanded their role. They have been working to facilitate more of our special education meetings. And we've worked to dedicate that time, continue to dedicate that time. It's a very important role in the district. We are prioritizing, which would be no surprise, the certified interventionist again, and we want to continue to build that out as we had planned prior to the pandemic. And then really under special programs, this bullet is that the continuing, the expansion of the RISE program, one of our self-contained programs. Right now, in D Trail, we are very pleased to be adding a classroom at Pierceville for the upcoming school year. Dr. Russell mentioned the O'Keefe program. So you will see that is a priority. We feel that O'Keefe is a valuable program that we would like to offer to our families. We do need to get in mind and have more information as to any restrictions with the six-foot social distancing. We will need to get those family commitments before we staff, which is why some of our positions, we have not rehired back until we know, are we going to be able to offer O'Keefe? We would like to, if we are, what would that look like? Would it look like the, what it had in a more typical school year? Or if we have restrictions with our space, would we need to consider some other opportunities, some other ideas? For example, maybe offering O'Keefe in only some of our buildings that could, a lot, that does a lot for the space? Or building out some sort of virtual component? So that's, again, once we have more information, we can, we can continue to explore those possibilities. So our next steps at this point, as you've heard earlier, some of the unknowns. We have the reduction of force, which is our teachers tonight, at tonight's board meeting later in the agenda. We do the RIF where these are first-year teachers. They're doing a fabulous job and we would love to hire them back. But we do need to hold positions back until we really have that confirmed enrollment and we know how many teaching positions we need and we can make that next decision regarding O'Keefe. In April, we will open registration for our families. We are hoping to really push and get the word out in April to confirm that enrollment, which drives so much of our planning in this next few months. We need to know how many, how many students are coming back to school next school year and get the registrations in to make those decisions about middle school schedule, classroom teachers at the elementary level, as well as our, going into our special ed schedules and related service staff. Tied to that will be then the decision about O'Keefe. Once we have, in April and May, hopefully more information as to requirements from, whether it's the Health Department or CDC regarding the social distancing in the spaces in those schools. And then we keep building out from there. Once we know our classroom positions, we then can build out the art, music, PE, and teacher librarian schedules. There are some art, music, and PE teachers on that RIF list tonight. So again, we would hold back those positions until we have our enrollment. We can hopefully hire the, those teachers back into the district. We will, an ongoing review and refine those schedules for related service staff. We are anticipating the majority of our related service staff, that social work psychologist, would be stable and pretty much flat with what we have had the prior year. We are actively recruiting now psychologist positions and will soon be posting our social work and resource positions so we can continue the recruitment of the staff that we need. And then finally, really, it's just that the ongoing review and nevermind. If any new information becomes available and updated information, it will just be the ongoing process.
So just in summary then, obviously, information is still in flux. It always tends to be in flux this time of year, but with the pandemic, that certainly is causing some of these decisions that we would have made by this evening to be pushed back until April. But by April, we really do want to have the majority of these decisions solidified so we can begin the final planning for next school year. One of the points that we always have to make, again, back to the intro slide, is that continuing in the status quo, meaning that everything stays the same every year, really isn't realistic, nor is it always the best decision. This is an ongoing review. As Jane talked about, we're constantly reviewing our positions. We do have to, especially this year, carefully consider our budget and be fiscally responsible for making decisions. And what I mean by that is, you know, at the start of this school year, we had a $1.6 million deficit that we have to erase, and we also have to put money in the bank to ensure we don't have to go out to tax anticipation warrants and to start saving for capital needs. With our low tax base, there really isn't a lot of wiggle room here, and that's why this becomes a very tight decision-making process for our school district. However, we always want to maintain these quality programs. At the same time, we want to identify opportunities for efficiencies. And as a superintendent, I know this is a no-brainer, but change is always challenging. And everybody in a school district always wants the latest and greatest things, and they should. But sometimes to get those, you have to make other decisions and change some of your existing programs, which is always going to cause friction and anxiety in a school district. And we've seen that before play out in District 58 and really every district I've been a part of. It's, it's really, again, trying to maintain those quality programs, but also looking for efficiencies. We will always make the decisions on what we feel is best for kids, and that's how we guide our final decision-making process. So with that, Jane and I are available for any questions from the board.
Thank you.
Can you just maybe speak a little bit more about feasibility of O'Keefe? But you mentioned, you know, six-foot distancing and kind of waiting for additional guidance and, you know, waiting for enrollment numbers. Could you maybe just speak a little bit more about, you know, how April and May is going to kind of play out to drive towards a decision of yes or no as to whether we're going to be offering O'Keefe?
We're hoping, and I think, Kevin, if I speak to you better, to have more guidance from CDC and the Health Department to help us with those decisions.
So a couple of things that we're waiting on, and I'm going to use the word imminent because that's what the DuPage County Health Department told us today. The CDC has put out new guidelines regarding social distancing, and they're looking at community transmission levels. And I spoke to this a bit at the February 22 meeting. What we're seeing is numbers really starting to go down, although they seem to have kind of leveled off right now. But the CDC has actually put out guidance for schools suggesting that reducing the distance is going to be permissible and that when your transmission levels get below 50 cases per 100,000, it's acceptable. What we're waiting for is we're waiting for the IDPH to interpret that guidance and then issue what we're doing. The other thing that we're closely monitoring is other districts that have abandoned the six-foot social distancing guidelines. We want to talk to those districts. We want to hear what they're doing. Obviously, we're not comfortable doing that yet for a variety of reasons. But in the fall, that may not be a reality that we have to deal with is the requirement of six feet of social distancing. What we're really pushing the state for is to give us an answer on that sooner rather than later so we can begin our planning. If I were to bet right now, I think you would see some relaxing of those guidelines for next fall, which is why O'Keefe is something that we feel very strongly we want to offer. We're even going as far to have conversations with the Downers Grove Park District about extra space and other providers in town to see, you know, if we can't fit everybody in our buildings, is there an opportunity that we might be able to use some alternate sites and things like that? Again, those are just very high-level conversations right now. But it is a very, very important thing for us to provide O'Keefe, and we want to do everything we possibly can to provide that. So Steve, I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, IDPH will give us that guidance, and then we'll be able to come back in April and share a more realistic picture of what the fall is going to look like.
All right. Thanks for sharing that.
Just a peek under that, what they're running, but just is it that by having a six-foot distancing requirement, it requires us to use more spaces in the building than we otherwise would? Hence, we can't make second grade a half-day program, but the state does allow you to have a half-day kindergarten program. And so that's, that's how that works? Or am I missing something?
No, you hit the nail right on the head. That is exactly correct. Kindergarten in the state of Illinois is only a half-day program. It's the only grade level, or excuse me, a half-day requirement. It's the only grade level that you can do that at. And so if something would have to give, that would be the one that you would have that flexibility on.
Thanks for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane.
All right. Listed on tonight's agenda are 56 communications received by the board. Okay. Are there any additional communications anyone would like to, you know, share at this time? All right. Let's kick off the first report to the board then with Dr. Russell.
So there's a lot in the superintendent's report. There's just a lot going on that I want to update the board on. So thank you for bearing with me. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank, on behalf of the Board of Education, the Elsierra PTA, the staff and administration for the presentation this evening. We're very proud of all 13 of our schools and thoroughly enjoy these presentations. And especially, we want to thank Elsierra and Jason and Katie for coming tonight. It's always special to me to see Jason up at the podium. Jason and I were hired together way back when, I think, what, 21 years ago? And who would have ever thought, Jason, that we'd be both presenting to the board on the same night? But time surely does fly, and it's great to see you up here. Terms of curriculum instruction, this is just a reminder that on March 22, we postponed the curriculum workshop to talk about an instructional workshop in February. So we will be back at O'Neill on March 22 for the curriculum workshop. We'll be discussing our assessments. We'll be discussing our curriculum, the grade level standards, and our instructional practices. So that's a conversation that we're still going to have coming up here toward the end of the month. I also want to inform the community and the Board of Education that we just received some updates on our assessments that are required. The U.S. Department of Education has not given any of the states or territories the opportunity to opt out of mandatory standardized testing. That includes tests like the IAR and also the science test. While I am a huge proponent of accountability, it is unfortunate that we need to take away from in-person and live instruction to conduct these tests, which take approximately one week to complete. So the thought of taking kids away to take another test, I don't think sits well with, with any of us. That's not that we're against accountability. It just makes it very challenging. Late last week, the Illinois State Board of Education informed districts that these tests may be able to be pushed back to the fall. Due to the number of staff needed to run our onsite and remote instructional program after spring break, this could certainly be a big relief for our students and staff if we did push it back to the fall. However, the district pursues this route. It would mean that tests would have to be administered again in the spring for next school year. So it's not a good situation either way around. We're going to continue to meet with staff to consider all options available and then recommend a path forward to the Board of Education. Again, neither one is very appealing. The thought of getting kids back in school and then having them devote a week to testing this spring, again, isn't ideal. The thought of having kids do two rounds of testing in the fall on top of math assessments isn't always the most ideal either. What makes this particular round of testing in the spring challenging is because we're using every available space, and I mean every available space in our schools this spring. Those are often places where we would be administering individual tests or small group tests because of IPs and the requirements there. So we have to work through all that, given this curveball from the state. And Justin and I will have more information for the board after we conclude our meetings over the next couple of weeks. Terms of finance, the sale of the district's bonds has been completed, and our Assistant Superintendent Todd Dreifall reports that all the money has been received. So we want to thank Todd and the FAC for really pursuing that and thank the board for its approval. This means that the money is now available to complete capital projects like the Piercedown roof and the mechanical equipment replacement. For facilities, it's been a long year. The district's task force last met over one year ago at Lester School on March 2. So think about how much has taken place in that last year. The meeting was very well attended, and at that meeting, the group made recommendations that we pursue about $179 million in referendum bond sales to fund projects like enhanced security, grade level reconfiguration, eight years of maintenance, a remodeling of all the bathrooms in the school district and adding air conditioning in all of our schools. We then held a special board meeting last March to talk about a robust community engagement before we made a final decision. Unfortunately, the pandemic struck and the community engagement process around a referendum had to be postponed. The district, though, fully intends to revive the conversation on the other side of this spring break as our facilities need to be repaired, renovated, or modernized. So those, all those needs are one year down the road. And so the intent of this part of the update is to inform the community that we do want to continue those conversations because we need to. While some things remain on hold, though, others do need to move forward. The district needs funds to address some urgent capital needs now and can't wait for the larger referendum, which will hopefully take place in 2022. Therefore, the district has proposed that the Longfellow Center, which was closed decades ago for instruction, should be sold. The building is very old, costly to maintain, and has many capital items that need to be addressed. To put it in perspective, Longfellow School closed in 1978 for instruction, and the building currently serves as storage and a home for the district's maintenance staff, technology staff, and around a quarter of the administrative team. The money received from the sale of Longfellow can be immediately put to use to address capital needs throughout the district. The district is also proposing to retrofit the current administrative building to serve as storage and the new home for the maintenance and technology teams. The administration would then move into a new leased location within the boundaries of District 58. The FAC fully supports this idea, and the administration plans to ask the board to approve the district's architectural firm to begin work on the retrofitting of the current ASC at the next meeting in April. The board would then be asked to sell the Longfellow Center later this year. Originally, the sale of Longfellow was going to be discussed after the original referendum or in conjunction with the Village of Downers Grove building a new Village Hall that could be shared. Unfortunately, the Village Hall proposal has been tabled due to COVID, and the district's capital needs can't wait. So again, if you remember from last year, we had talked about doing the master facility plan, then discuss Longfellow, then discuss the administrative center. Now, we've had to reverse those because we need that access to capital. So now it would be Longfellow, the administrative center, and then the bigger bond question through the task force. Now, to ensure that the district has not missed anything and to promote a robust community engagement process, the FAC is forming a small study group led by Todd Dreifall that will meet three times prior to the April board meeting. This group will review all the work to date so the taxpayers of the district can be reassured that the sale of the property has been thoroughly reviewed before a final recommendation for any changes would be made to the board at the April meeting. In terms of public relations, the district successfully completed round one of the District 99 Consortium Vaccination Clinic on Sunday, February 28. As a reminder, our consortium is comprised of our school district, Marker School District, Darian School District, Center Cast School District, Woodridge School District, Community High School 99, the Village of Downers Grove, the Village of Woodridge, the City of Darian, and the Village of Westmont. District 58 is extremely proud to have helped organize and run this clinic that allowed for all of our staff to be vaccinated, municipal workers, including police and fire, park district staff, and most importantly, our seniors. The school district dedicated approximately half of their allotment to seniors. In total, over 1,300 people received their first dose of the Pfizer vaccine a few Sundays ago. The next clinic will take place at Downers Grove South on Sunday, March 21, and a signup email will be sent out this week. For anyone who participated in the first round, you'll get a new signup this week for the second round. This clinic is another example of how school districts with support from their boards and communities have rallied together to assist those in need during this pandemic. In terms of personnel, later in the agenda, the board will be asked to approve the hiring of the new principal of Lester School. The current principal, and I think she's back there, Karen Novak, is retiring at the end of the year. On behalf of a grateful school district, thank you to Karen for her 12 years of dedicated service to District 58. Earlier today, our team shared that the district is in need of help from community members to assist with lunch at the elementary schools. We have heard from our community that there is a strong desire to increase the instructional day. In order to make this happen, we need your help. Please consider either working as a lunchroom supervisor or volunteering your time to give back to our schools during the pandemic. We need your help and would be grateful if you can join our team. I'm pleased to report, at the start of this meeting, we've already had 69 individuals who have registered to help us out. We certainly need some more. I was getting a lot of comments like 150. I want everybody to also keep in mind that 150 is a combination of outside and inside. So our teachers are also volunteering to do this. And so through a combination, that's how we get to that number. Technology. The technology department is working to prepare for the shift in our learning model after spring break. This requires creating new classes in Power School and ensuring that our staff and students have access to the digital resources they need. We will also be collaborating with the B&amp;G Department to add visual equipment to about 20 new learning spaces across the district. So for So if we're using libraries and gyms, we have to make sure that those are fitted properly, and James and his team are working hard to make that happen. Student services. This is an update on Aaron's Law. Special Services has been partnering with outside agencies to support families and talking to their children about sexual abuse and prevention. This past month, over a hundred families participated in training with the Darkness to Light Agency, a nonprofit agency dedicated to using research, education, and community advocacy to bring best practice strategies and child safety to communities. Additionally, Special Services will be hosting an evening in partnership with Magical Consulting and Counseling, a group that partners with therapeutic day schools, or special education schools in the area, uncovering child safety strategies for children who have specialized care in the home and outside the home. This is planned for Wednesday, April fourteenth, at six-thirty via Zoom, with topic-specific breakout sessions planned for April twenty-second. So thank you to Jessica and her team for putting all of that together. I also want to take this time to update the Board of Education on our instructional model in our conversation from February twenty-second. At the last board meeting, the board voted to increase the instructional time for our elementary and middle school students. The increased time is scheduled to begin after spring break. Elementary students are scheduled to increase to four-point-two-five hours in April and then to the greatest extent possible in May for the remainder of the year. Middle school students will increase their instructional day from approximately eight-thirty to two-twenty-five, three o'clock for music students, immediately following spring break. Middle school students will stay on the A/B model due to social distancing requirements. There just isn't enough space to fit all the students in the school. For the remainder of the year, all students, though, will maintain six feet on-site unless the guidance changes. This safety requirement is the reason why some students have to change teachers. There is simply no way to fit all the students in the classroom without some needing to change teachers at the elementary level and why the middle school students can't attend onsite daily, as I shared before. At the elementary level, we will also need to pull several staff members out of their positions to make this work. Those staff members include, but are not limited to, specials teachers, reading specialists, math interventionists, and coaches. But this is certainly not ideal and will cause other services to be reduced. I firmly believe that the increased instructional time will greatly benefits our students academically, socially, and emotionally. The board also requested that the administration find ways to speed up the timeline for a full day of instruction at the elementary level to avoid a two-step process. The two-step process may inadvertently cause too many issues and also cause parents to schedule childcare arrangements twice. Please note that we will also stagger the start times between preschool, elementary, and middle school so parents can make it from one school to another. I know that that was a question that many had asked. That is in the plans to stagger those by about ten minutes, so people can get from building to building. At the last meeting, we just put up a slide with an asterisk that said, "Here are the start times", but we do plan on staggering those times and trying to align them to the current start times at the elementary in the middle. I am happy to report that the administration is making good progress toward a one-step process in speeding up this to start after spring break. The team is planning around the clock with building administrators and staff on scheduling class lists, lunch, and hiring additional staff. The administration hopes to send something out next week to families that will indicate whether this will be able to take place. While we are optimistic that it can be done, we also want to be cautious that we don't overpromise something that we end up not being able to deliver. I also recognize that we're at a similar point as a community that we were in during July, September, and November, when other changes had to be made. As was the case earlier in the year, when other changes had to be made, we are starting to see those strong feelings come back. Some staff and community members welcome the change, while others do not. Unfortunately, when tensions get high, some may choose to act in a manner that's not consistent with our values in District Fifty-Eight. Staff, administrators, board members, and community members on all sides of this issue have been attacked based on their opinions regarding increased instructional time. One of the things that separates our districts from others is that when it comes to debating these issues, we have a good, robust debate, we have a vote, and then everyone comes together to support that decision. Now is the time to once again come together and treat each other with the mutual respect and civility that we all deserve. We all want what is best for our students. The students deserve the very, or excuse me, the students deserve the very best from all of us, and I'm committed to ensuring that we move forward together, just like we have every step of the way. We will get through this next change and continue to provide our students and staff with the support they need to make it successful. Today is also International Women's Day, and we want to give a special shout-out to all the women in District Fifty-Eight that make a huge difference every single day. Many of us would not be where we are today without the help of our mothers, women educators, and other female leaders. We appreciate all that you do and can't thank you enough for your valuable contributions. That is the conclusion of the superintendent's report. Questions?
I have a question. You, as far as the March twenty-second meeting, which would be the curriculum workshop, you're saying next week would be an announcement from your administration about whether it's going to be able to do it one step or two?
Correct.
When will teacher assignments go? When will them, is it going to be two different notifications?
Yeah, so-
They'll know about their teachers or potential changes first, and then whether it's going to be a two-step process?
So just to be clear, we're talking about the elementary?
Correct.
At the elementary, we're committed to the week of March eighth, which is this week, by the end of the week, to get it to parents. And so we're still going to hit that deadline, because in the four-point-two-five-hour model or the longer-day model, the teacher assignments would be the same. And so by the end of this week, we will get out those class lists to our families and share the teacher assignments.
Is it going to be by school, community, or will all the schools be doing it at the same time?
Yeah, so all the schools will be releasing at the same time, and Justin, James, or Jane, let me know if I'm misspeaking here. What we will do is we will send out information from each school individually, and at the same time, then, parents can log into Power School to see the new assignments. Did I hit that right?
Yeah, some of the individual communication from buildings may look a little different depending on the scope of change, but generally speaking, everything will be available.
But it won't just be a cold, "Hey, go into Power School and log on". We're going to be providing our families with information as to why these changes were made. In some buildings, you'll see more changes than others, and so some could be a personal phone call, others can be an explanation or a letter from the principal, and then a lot of conversations afterwards.
And then, as far as staggering the start times, because we did hear from the community, as somebody that used to have a middle school and an elementary school, and having to be at the, a lot of people are maybe driving and not taking the bus right now, what that, which communication will that go?
Yeah, so the start times for school will come out at the March fifteenth, that week, that communication.
Next week's communication, okay.
We are still finalizing, for those in the community, we share our buses with District Ninety-Nine and District Sixty-Eight. And so all three districts have to work in conjunction with one another. All three districts are now currently talking about changing their instructional models after spring break. And so we are all dependent on one another's start times. But what we're generally looking for at the elementary level and the middle school level is an eight-twenty start time at the elementary school, an eight-thirty start time at the middle school. So those would stagger. And then at the end of the day, we would also stagger them by ten minutes. So if the elementary, excuse me, if the middle school is getting out at two-twenty, we'd be looking at around two-thirty-ish for the elementary school, so people can get there on time. We want to make sure that we stagger those. In the presentation that we gave on February twenty-second, they were all the same, and it was done intentionally because we needed more information from the bus company. Right now, we're still trying to work with the high school, especially around the end of the day, to make sure that when we are done, that they can get to the high school with their times and to Woodbridge Sixty-Eight.
And then, one other question about the lunchroom supervisor volunteers or whatnot. Is it like, is it modeled the same way it was during pre-COVID, as far as when somebody in a building was going to volunteer or be the lunchroom aide? The process and the protocols and the things they go through, is it the same?
Yeah, it's a great question, I appreciate that. And Jane, please feel free to add on if I miss anything. We will never have a lunchroom supervisor that we don't train ahead of time, especially with child allergies and just making sure that people understand there's a big difference between supervising first graders at lunch and supervising sixth graders and then supervising middle school. Although, being a former middle school lunchroom supervisor, sometimes there wasn't a big difference between first graders. But food allergies especially. So there's a great deal of work that has to go into working with every supervisor to make sure that they're aware, to making sure that we're wiping down areas correctly. That is a significant concern. It's very near and dear to many of our parents, and I completely understand why. When you're talking about EpiPens, all those things, we have to do a lot of training around all of those. And so there are several opportunities for training, even if we did have an accelerated start. While most of the school district is off for spring break, keep in mind the district office stays open. And so we're looking at training over spring break. We're also looking at trainings to take place that April sixth day on the election to offer those trainings then. But we would follow the same protocols and procedures in our personnel office with fingerprinting and background checks and all of that.
And I did, I got it as a parent as well, but just to make sure that volunteers, you're looking for people that would volunteer for the full week, correct?
Yeah, so the preference is always, if you're going to sign up to do lunchroom duty, if you could sign up for all five days, that makes life a lot easier on so many levels. Because what gets problematic is when you have somebody who can come on Mondays and then somebody who can come every other Tuesday, it becomes very difficult to manage. So obviously, the preference is to get that consistent person. That being said, we will work with people who volunteer or who sign up to work because we need to fill these spots. And again, I want to reiterate that our teachers are being great signing up. We've got families who are signing up. We have a long way to go. But Jane and I are going to be talking to several community groups, starting with our Education Foundation tomorrow evening, our PTA Council, Junior Women's Club, all these different groups throughout our community to see, crossing guards many people to see who can help.
Great, thank you for fleshing that one.
Anybody else? There's a lot of info in there now.
Thank you.
So again, we hope to make those announcements. I know I'm getting a lot of questions, and I understand parents, you know, want to know the teacher changes, so that's going to come first. That will come by the end of this week. And then whether or not we can accelerate that timeline, which we feel pretty good about right now, but I just can't fully commit until we have more of the staffing finalized, which we're in the process of doing. But we are certainly trying to do it all in one step to help alleviate two transitions.
And the lunches are in your individual cohort or your room?
Correct, right now, unless the guidance changes.
So in middle school, your, the kiddos in your cohort are going to stay where they are, and same with elementary? You're not going to the gym anymore, or everyone's having it in their room with their class?
That is correct. Think about lunch in the classroom, which is not necessarily unheard of for our school district. So I know we've got Lester in the back there, that is something that we've had to do at Lester School for a very long time, just because of the size of the school. It's also not uncommon at the elementary level when you have things that are in the gym or setups that you have to have lunch in the classroom. Certainly is not our preferred option, but during these times, we have to do whatever we can to make sure that we can fit it all in.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, the email that's coming next week, not only will clarify just for the elementary if we can do it in one step, but it's going to clarify the times in general, right? So our middle school times, our grade school, all of those things will be hashed out?
Correct. The week of the fifteenth, we have got our final busing meetings this week with the high school and then also Woodridge. We will have all of that finalized. We're getting very close. And so the week of the fifteenth, you will get all the start and end times. And then you will also get whether or not we can get it to the greatest extent possible right at the turn of spring break.
Appreciate it.
But in general, the times we're looking at, elementary would start at eight-twenty, and the middle school would start at eight-thirty, so we have that ten-minute break between. Our preschool times, by the way, are unaffected by this.
I'll just say, thanks to you and your team. Often, my great ideas are ten percent of the problem and nine percent of executing them. And so just appreciate you and your team for figuring out ways to navigate uncharted territory.
And really, the credit goes to, you know, our staff and the administration, what they've been doing nights and weekends to make this. I'm very proud to work alongside this team. They continue to roll their sleeves every step of the way, and I'm just so very grateful for all the hard work. We're not there yet, but we are working very hard to make this happen. And again, I do appreciate all the community feedback that we've gotten. I understand these changes are stressful. As a parent myself, I got an email from my school district saying that it's going to be hybrid for the remainder of the year. A week later, I got another email that said, "Nope, after spring break, we're all coming back, and we're going to redo all the rooms and make it..." So this is not just happening in District Fifty-Eight. It is happening around everywhere else, and all school districts are going through these growing pains. And I especially want to thank our teachers as well and our instructional support staff. Every time we do a change, it's another set of plans, it's another thing that they have to endure. They've been great this entire school year, and I want to thank them. I have heard community members saying, "Well, our teachers don't want to do this" or that. That is not what we're finding. Our teachers have been super supportive every step of the way, and they just want the information so we can move forward and so that they can do a great job. And that's our goal, to continue to get the information to them as quickly as possible.
Well, thank you. Alright, I see you waiting in the wings, Mr. Dreifall. Give us your monthly business report.
Stretch a bit. Good evening, Board. You have in your packet the monthly year-to-date report. We reviewed this and the radio, thanks to the FAC. We are in a good position as expense versus revenue currently. A big piece of that, we pointed out, is the expense on the transportation side being considerably lower than it has been in previous years because of where we're at right now with our transportation system. Obviously, next year, that will flip around. We are, I will point out, on the revenue side, you have the working cash bonds that are, the bonds are just sold. Those are deposited in the working cash in February. I'll also point that March first, we received a million dollars in federal funds that just by a day this month's year-to-date. That's the IDEA grant that we, you know, if you look at the year-to-date comparative to last year, you can see we're below that. Let's bring that back up. So cash position and revenue, we're in good position, you know, even considering all of the other issues. We look at and note about interest income and how much smaller that is compared to last year at this time, which is an unrestricted revenue piece. Overall, the last sheet of that report is where we are, we always look at our cash on hand. From one standpoint, we're in a really good position, because we're four-point-three million dollars ahead of last year. Obviously, that has the working cash in it. When we take that out, we're about eight-hundred thousand dollars to the good. So we are still ahead of where we were last year at this time. We know that a big piece of that is the transportation piece, but again, like I said, the federal revenue piece, it does come in March, will help boost that as well. One other thing before we get to the, some of the action items, oh, the type of the financial plan. You have in there the, I call it the in-progress draft financial plan. When we first talked about a schedule of trying to put a, you know, a draft plan to you in February and a final in March, I don't know if we truly grased some of the pieces that we were putting together and the continual change that we've been working through this year. That was obviously a little bit overly optimistic opinion on my end to think that we could do that, given the fact that, and the goal is always to have to the board, a picture and an item for them for you to make a decision on, so that you can be able to adjust in expense-wise so that we're in a balanced position and we're meeting those, the structure and those goals. Given that, you know, the calendar is extended and we have, you have it till April to make some of those changes, you know, we have a little more time with that. We also have that presentation by Dr. Rosentis that we saw this evening that gets rolled into this, which is obviously a huge section, and that had to be in there first. So we will wrap this up, and hopefully we'll also have some better news and more money into that. We understand that there is, I think, five, rumor is, press conference, press release, five billion dollars towards Illinois schools out of the bill that may be passing Congress today or tomorrow or this week sometime. And what that means to us, we don't know yet. We may not know that in April yet as well, but that could also have some impact on to that financial position. So you have that for review. Comments are welcome and always, you know, interested. And we will make some adjustments and then bring that back to you in April. One other piece, before we get to the action item that are on your agenda. I had a, received a call from the county clerk's office this afternoon, and actually, I think I called this morning, I was out and returned- actually, I think they called this morning. I was out and returned another call. In last year's tax levy, and please understand, the county clerk's office still is working on a system, that they're doing a lot of hand entry from one set of books into the calculation into the computer system. Between the approval sheet and the sign-off that we get in February and March, we just got this year's incentive back, to, from that to what was finally extended and put on the tax bills, there was a transposition of a number in the bond and interest levy. And that was about an $80,000 increase in the bond and interest levy last year than what was scheduled for. The county clerk has, under state statute, an ability to go back one year and make a prior-year adjustment to correct such errors. So if this had happened two years ago and was just discovered, they literally couldn't do anything. But because it's one year in arrears, they can go back and make that adjustment. And so our quick conversation was, well, if that's the case, then, you know, make that adjustment in the prior year, you know, adjustment and move forward. So we're working through that, you know, with them, and so that will be, you know, reflected on this next year's bill.
Todd, could you share a little bit about the difference between the bond and interest and the operating funds?
So our bond and interest, so operating funds are, the education, the school district does fund the county. We levy by fund. The board approves that in November of each year. We spend most of our operating by education fund, operation and maintenance fund, transportation fund. We have a fund for, that's the IMRF and social security, which is the employer's portions of that, and the working cash fund, which we have a small levy that is our borrowing bank when we're in a cash position and need to move money, and we hold on to that. Those are our operating funds. That's what we use to operate each year. It is under the tax cap or retail, property tax extension limitation law. That is limited by CPI, new growth, so forth. That's that. That's what we use to pay salaries, benefits, programs, everything else. That along with whatever we get funding from the state and so forth. The bonded interest is those that are, that are under the bonds, that are the debt, those issuance that the board just made last month, that is under a different calculating, you know, called bond interest. That is limited by the debt service extension base. And for those who have want more interest in this, and we go back to the memo that we have in the tax levy back in November, the board docs, because we have a description and terminology in there we include to help explain some of this in detail. That is limited to 1.495, 1.504, I can't remember right off the top of my head, but somewhere in that range. It goes up next year again to 0.3%. It increases by CPI, and that is the, that piece that is available for our debt. So when that over, now, we get to the abatements, and there's a kind of, a note in the working cash abatements that you have, that the district several years ago had a debt service above its capacity, and so therefore, the district was, you know, one of the, you know, bond interest fund was negative, is negative right now, because that levy was exceeding what we could, we had to pay more than what we could levy for. And so that is in that piece. That's in there. So it doesn't impact operations, is what, you know, I think Dr. Russell was getting to, is it doesn't impact operations. It impacts the bond and interest levy. We will make the adjustment and then look forward.
Correct. So this error by the county clerk of $80,000, it's not like we would have to go back into the education fund and short that by $80,000 to make up for that. That's a completely separate fund. That has nothing to do with this.
And I'm sure I gave a longer detailed response.
Thank you, Todd.
Moving on to the action items, you have a number of, this is bid season, so you have supply bids for approval. We have fee increases as well. This is that time of the year we do that. And those increases are included into the financial plan projection. You also have what the bids that we have been holding on to, we have received some time ago that we went through for the mechanical equipment and roof repair. We obviously did not ask for board approval until we had the funds to cover those. And so now that those bonds are in, we can ask you for approval on those bids. You have also two items, the working cash abatements resolutions. Because those are working cash bonds, they must go into the working cash fund. They then must be, working cash fund cannot spend money. So to put it into the proper funds, you do a formal working cash abatement that the attorney has prepared. By passing those, you are moving those funds into their proper sources. There's also the one that goes into the bond and interest, again, talking about that negative balance, that helps take care of some of those issues. And that is all I have. If there are any questions.
Questions for the board?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And the financial five-year plan is looking fantastic. It's going to be really, really helpful for us, is we have to, all these little tweaks and things that we're talking about, understanding the impact that it's going to have a couple of years out, is going to be very meaningful. And we totally understand, we don't even have our final staffing in here yet. So I know in a typical year, that would have happened in March, but with the extension of the year and all the other stuff going on, we...
The first year always takes a lot of time to set up the template, as you have noticed is how we build these things. On top of that, you know, everything else, the fluctuation has not...
But it's looking great. So thank you for sharing the draft with the board. All right, we got some committees that met, but the policy committee did not meet in February, but we did have a legislative committee meeting and a forum. So Member Doshi.
Yeah, happy to give a report. We held our legislative forum, formerly known as Legislative Breakfast on February 19th. And I was just really proud of the team, the administration, the committee, the board coming together to find a way to make it happen in a pandemic year. We obviously shifted from a breakfast, which is a live event, to a virtual event. One of the benefits of making it a virtual event is we ended up having a whole slate of our legislators being able to attend. And having seven legislators attend and provide their perspectives on education, new policy that are coming out of the administration, things to expect from Springfield, really led to a very rich and robust discussion. Having the virtual format this year also allowed us to do a new format where we were able to do a whole workspace and then also breakout rooms where folks could have kind of like a one-on-nine, one-on-ten conversation with the local legislator. And from all accounts and all the feedback that I've heard, it's, it went really well. And so thanks to the administration coming, your team, particularly Melissa, Megan, and Katie, for all their hard work in helping make that happen in the legislative committee, my co-chair Emily, our member Hennes, to help make this come together. There's a lot of learning that we have. We had our legislative committee meeting following the forum, and there's a few things that we liked about what happened this year that we'd like to be able to bring back for ideally for next year, whether it's a format in a live event or a virtual event. There's also some changes that we think we can weigh and make as well, but that's for next year's planning efforts. But overall, we were really proud of the event and thanks everyone for the support.
Thank you. It was very well done. And in a year that we have to do a lot of things differently, it was, it was very welcomed. It was well-attended, and I did enjoy the, kind of that small group breakout session. It was great. Any questions? Member Doshi. All right. The FAC committee did, the financial advisory committee did meet as well, though a lot of my thunder was stolen today by Dr. Russell and by Mr. Dreifol. They like, they want me, keep me concise, you know? So that's fine. But just to kind of give you a brief update, what we did was we did review that financial plan. Normally, it would be ready by now, but it's going to be ready in April. Some, obviously, the unknowns that we talked about is OKEAP and any additional federal money that may be coming. Even if this passes, we don't know exactly what that looks like and how that could get allocated, stuff along those lines. You heard Dr. Russell talk about the fact that we are forming a small group that is going to meet three times prior to the next April meeting. Their main goal is really to do a deep-dive look and have a more thorough conversation on Longfellow and all the plans that sort of are coalescing around that, just to make sure we've kind of dotted every i, crossed every t, understand every concern. So they built up a nice group of people, kind of on both sides of the issue, and really taking a look, a deep-dive look into that. And so I'm really excited to see what's going to come out of that. But the goal is for us to be able to come back to the board in April with some direction on, hopefully, starting to pursue an opportunity to look for rental spaces, engaging White and Company in a contract, put together a design of what the ASC retrofit could look like, and taking the first steps at engaging with agents to look at offloading that property. So that would, that would come to a conversation starting next week. We also just did review the bond sale. A lot of credit to Todd, who really kind of pushed us really, really hard to scramble and add that extra date in there. While we, it really couldn't have been planned much better. We got a rate of under 1%, which under normal times would be unheard of, and those rates are steadily going up right now. So us kind of scrambling to get to that was a, was nice as opposed to waiting until just a regular meeting, but doing that is part of a special meeting to make sure we could go in and lock in other rates as they were going up was, was well done. So we did have a gentleman, which organization was he with, that came into the meeting?
Oppenheimer.
Oppenheimer, yeah. So he came in and they went through a sort of a trend on what those, those were looking like. We did a review of the summer work. That's the stuff that we're bidding on today, and a look at the year-to-date. And then the last thing I want to tell you about is that one of the things we did have a small discussion about was the working cash fund policy. Right now, we never locked in a, we were talking about a year ago into putting a working cash fund policy in place that would put us at 35% of our annual budget in working cash. We felt uncomfortable doing that once the pandemic hit, because we obviously went into a deficit spend. We're not sure if we were able to do that, but we're feeling comfortable that we can come forward with a policy. So that could come as early as April. We can bring that up for a first read, so that the board would have an opportunity to have that approved, so that we could do that. That concludes my report, unless Steve has anything additional to add.
Nothing to add.
Appreciate it.
And just to jump in on that policy recommendation, as we reviewed our new board policy manual on the line with the press manual, one of that, the specific policies around fund balances, the policy committee has already come to the conclusion or shared that that is something that we'll outsource to the FAC. And so what we had talked about was bypassing the policy committee just for this one particular policy, because it is more financial, and then bringing a draft based on what the FAC had shared it wanted to see at the next April meeting. So I'll work with Melissa, and we'll have a draft policy to put on a first reading, obviously not to adopt at the next meeting, but at least to get that out there.
Any other questions? Common? All right, the district leadership team also met, and for, it has been a while since we've had a standard, regular update of the district leadership team. So this is our, has it been, was it the end of last school year that it was more of a, where we kind of did a real, I don't know, I feel like it's been forever. But, so we did a good recap in all three goals. As you remember, this was formed out of the meet-and-confer committee once we created the strategic plan to keep an eye on all the goals. So we reviewed all three individual goals, the first one being on curriculum. And obviously, all of our curriculum timelines have been impacted by what we're doing, but new math has been implemented and continues to be worked through this year with a lot of success. Though social studies has been delayed, though they are piloting in the middle school. We've had a lot of additional sort of PD that's taken place that wasn't necessarily planned, that is more around implementation during this time and adapting to the, sort of the new norms in teaching that we have. But the review and revision of curriculum would be due about now, and that's where we, one of the things that we wanted to avoid was sort of long stretches where we weren't actively looking at our curriculums that were in place. That stuff has been put on hold. One of the things, with everything else going on, we're avoiding completely, is pulling teachers out of the classroom to work on additional committee work like that. So that, in the meantime, has been put on hold. We talked about how we define success. We engaged, the district that you heard Justin talk about a couple of weeks ago, that we're engaging in a similar school study with the NWEA, which is actually a similar district study. So we'll look at districts that have similar demographics, two hours, similar sizes, all those kind of things, and we'll compare how they're doing on NWEA map compared to how we're doing. We also are going through a process of reviewing local assessments and report cards and just taking a look at that again. And we want to just figure out how we truly capture an understanding on the whole child, so that we're, so that we're measuring not just one specific set of test scores. We're not just looking at how we do in grade schools or on the IAR or something like that, but we're really going to. We are running towards the end of our strategic plan term that we had set forward, so they are already beginning to look at what KPIs should look like beyond the term that we put in place. There may have to be a discussion, you know, depending, we're right now in the middle of COVID and so many other things, but at some point, do we need to just kind of re-up the strategic plan that we're on and sort of stay on the trend? Is there something that we need to, is this something that we're going to have to re-engage in the next couple of years to start building out a new strategic plan? That's something that we'll probably have to start looking at here in the next year or two. But we also talked about how important it is that the data that we're looking at has some consistency across the board. So one of the things that we talked about in the last meeting, and Steve, I heard you talk a lot about this, we were talking about what we're looking at, how does that get implemented in the classroom? So the conversation that we were talking about is that we, as the board, tend to want to look at things in aggregate, look at big picture, but we want to know that we're looking at the data on the same spectrum. So the data that they're using in an individual classroom to help students should be looking, should be looked at at the school level or classroom level by the principal. It should be looked at school levels by our central administration, and it should be looked at at district level for us, with some kind of small breakouts, maybe by demographics or by school. But that, that they're drilling into that same data, so that the data that we're looking at is the same data we're taking action on, so that we can see if the improvements that they're making by using that data is actually making a difference in the schools. So we talked about what that could potentially look like and how we work with that. That doesn't mean that some of the data that we've been looking at previously goes away, because a lot of that stuff is what gets reported to the state. A lot of that is what gets reported on our school report card and stuff like that, that all the realtors ask us about. So keep on the lookout for a lot of those things, as well as we continue to work on that. So we're going to have a curriculum workshop next, or two weeks from now, where we look at some of this data, but we can start talking about the future of that data as well. Talked a little bit about evaluating SCL, and then we talked about the portrait of a graduate, how important that was, but I believe it was Tracy that brought up the, maybe the need to have a look at lower levels as well, like, maybe not waiting till eighth grade, but we have some other points in the district where we're saying, maybe what does a third grader look like? What does a sixth grader look like as well? So we have an opportunity to catch that before it goes too far. We had an opportunity to talk about Goal Two, which is connecting with the community. The district-wide plan was completed back in spring of 2020. Some goals are sort of benefiting from an extended timeline, because we've sort of adapted to communicating in a new way during all the change that we have going right now. But just a good note, all of our emails and stuff like that have a really good read rate, including our internal staff newsletter, which has an 80% open rate. And a lot of that comes from them really cleaning that up, having concise, important information in there. They know that's a place that they can go there for, for those key, important data points. And it's not flashy. It doesn't have a lot of pictures or whatever. It really just gets nice and concise. We finished a communication survey back in May of 2020, and the DLT was supposed to have reviewed that. That sort of got punted. And so we had a little bit of a discussion, like, does it make sense to look at that data now, or does it not fit anymore? But we decided that it really did, we really do want to take a look at when everyone was focused on our communication before all this stuff happened, really where we were, how much, you know, how much of that were we able to step up and do, and really take a deep-dive look so the next meeting that the DLT will take a So the next meeting, the, the DLT will take a look at that. Couple of things that we're just really proud of is that we partnered with places like the Ed Foundation to do kind of grocery help, you know, for the community at large. And we also did a lot of meal programming for our students in the district that, that need, that need meals. We had virtual events with our PTAs. The superintendent's Community Advisory Council is back up and running. I don't know, have you actually had a meeting yet? You did, right?
Yeah, we have another one on March 15th.
Perfect. And then, and then the policies are in really great shape. So we did hear from Jane that, that they are waist-deep in on the administrative regs and they're going to keep plowing away at those. The new website is live and they've had people looking at that and are proud of the consistency that we have between our schools. And then goal three, I'm, I'm just going to sort of punt on because we sort of covered that in the FAC. Goal three was the securing our future. But I did want to mention that we do have plans on kickstarting the citizens task force again and we'll be talking about that soon. And really kind of see, one of the things we were talking about is having that conversation again of, are our priorities in that citizen task force look the same now post-COVID? You know, conversations like when we talked about air quality a year ago, that might be perceived very differently today than it was in 2019. All right, that was a lot. So with that, any questions?
That was a long day anyway, right? We went right from DLT to a board meeting.
Right. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Any questions on that? Member Harris, Health Wellness?
Sure. We met on March 4th. This was our, our February meeting that had just been postponed until March. So we were only looking at January numbers because it was too early at that time to have anything from February. The good news, of course, is January's looking good so far, but that's not really to be unexpected because in January, it's right after the first year, that's when your deductibles restart, your out-of-pocket costs. So we are looking at revenue over expenditures by about $100,000, but we're not, we're not really looking at a trend yet, but at least it's a good start for the calendar year. The major task of the Health Wellness Committee right now is, I've been talking to the board a lot over the last few months, is, well, we're working with CHC to develop a multi-year wellness incentive program. The committee has a lot of good questions about the, they're being mindful of the structural costs and assessing how those changes would, would impact, you know, our bottom line is, you know, our, our MRF and also just how it would impact what we're currently doing and how it would change behaviors and how it would change participation and so on and so forth. The next step is to really analyze those costs because it is an investment from, from the district. The district shoulders some of that cost, the, the members pay into the MRF, so that that's on them as well. So we really want to make sure that, that it's, it's a good investment. So analyzing that cost, understanding how the, the, any increases to incentives would impact the efficacy of our wellness program. Short and sweet. Questions?
Appreciate it. Questions? All right. Thank you, Greg. All right, we have no items up for discussion tonight, so that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended for, is a time for the members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. Criticism of individuals is not in order. The board has allotted 30 minutes for public comment this evening. We ask that you keep your comments to a three-minute limit to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. At this time, I've received one card. We will ask that you step up to the podium, state your name in your attendance area and provide your public comment. I'm looking for Katie Thomas from El Sierra, one of talking about the return to learn.
Welcome back. Hi. So I'm Katie Thomas. I'm from the El Sierra area. And as I watched the last board meeting during public comment, I was surprised at how many community members said that they were speaking for the entire 58 community. What I heard over and over again was that the community had prioritized additional person, in-person learning regardless of the cost. As a member of the community, this wasn't my main priority. And the data shared at the last meeting showed I wasn't alone with about 49% of our families prioritizing, keeping the same teachers and schedule consistency. In my eyes, just the cost of having to rebuild those teacher relationships and the interruptions to schedules and the interruptions to student services and the lack of consistency for our kids and our staff, it just outweighed the potential benefits of more face-to-face in-person learning. I also recognize, though, that a large portion of our community did agree with those public commentators last week and that the, and with the board's decision to go through with plans for an extended day. What I do hope, though, is that our community can agree that it is going to take a group effort to make this transition successful, that we can all provide grace and support to our 58 staff members who are pivoting yet again during this school year. And perhaps at this point, some of them are even changing subjects, classes. So what can we do to help with this transition? As a board, as district leadership, as community members, what can we do to help them as they tirelessly prepare for yet another big change? Do they need more prep time? Do they need curriculum pacing guides changed a little bit because they're going to have to devote time to relearning those new students that are in their classrooms? Do they need supplies? For some, it'll be like starting a new school year in April. Senior leadership and board, I just truly hope that you are keeping these conversations going with your staff and being flexible with the supports that you can offer them. Families and community members, what are we willing to do to help this transition be a success? Is it helping our students get ready for the transition? Is it setting a positive tone for them if they are one of those one of five kids who is going to have to change teachers? Is it continuing to practice good social distancing, even with spring break vacations, so that we can help mitigate exposure in our schools? Is it simply sending a thank you note to a teacher who you notice is working so hard behind the scenes? I truly believe that we can all play our part in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all we have for cards. Do we have anything for remote? We do not. We do have time, so if there's any additional comments at this time, feel free to come down to the podium. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the January 25th, 2021 special meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the January 25th, 2021 special meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2021 regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Who won?
Steve. You gotta give him one something.
All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2021 regular meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 16th, 2021 special meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the February 16th, 2021 special meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2021 special meeting slash instructional workshop as presented?
So moved. Second.
All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2021 special meeting and instructional workshop as presented. On tonight's agenda, we have a consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? No? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements, consisting of the list of bills and summary as presented in the packet of materials?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. Dr. Russell, we just hired a new principal, so hand it off to you to make an introduction.
Yes, I'm very happy to announce that Katie Novacel is officially the new principal of Lester Schools starting July 1st, 2021. Mrs. Novacel. Thank you, Mrs. Novak. You guys just got a glimpse into our administrative meetings now. Mrs. Novacel excelled during a very competitive interview process, which included several rounds of team interviews with staff, parents, and administrators. In addition, Lester parents and staff completed surveys identifying the characteristics they most desired in their new principal. And I held Lester student focus groups to hear directly from students about what they are seeking in their new principal. All of this feedback helped inform our hiring decision. The interview teams described Mrs. Novacel as child-centered, supportive, energetic, intelligent, caring, and thoughtful. Additionally, as Lester's current assistant principal, Mrs. Novacel has cultivated strong relationships with her school community and goes to great lengths to support her students, staff, and families. Katie has served as Lester's assistant principal since 2016. In this role, she has guided staff through curriculum implementations, created building schedules, facilitated special education in response to intervention meetings, evaluated staff, partnered with the PTA and other community groups, and assisted the principal with the day-to-day operations of the school. Prior to District 58, she served several years as a first-grade teacher and as a math and reading response to intervention specialist in Riverside and Lyons School District. She holds a Master of Arts in Principal Preparation with the Administrative Certification and a Master of Arts in Curriculum and Instruction with ESL endorsement, both from Concordia University. She also holds a Bachelor's of Science in Education with Elementary Education Certification from Illinois State University. Mrs. Novacel is already a beloved member of the Lester community and I have complete confidence that she will serve as an exceptional principal. Katie, on behalf of all of us in District 58, I'd like to welcome your family to the board meeting tonight, and we'd like to once again congratulate you on your well-honor, or well-deserved honor, excuse me.
I just want to start by saying thank you so much for this honor. I have been the assistant principal for the last five years at Lester and it is an incredible community. I have been blessed to be part of the District 58 family and I'm so excited to continue to do so in this new role. I, I look forward to starting this next step in my professional career, but more importantly, just beginning this new journey with the Lester staff, parents, and families. And I just am so thankful that you are entrusting me with this responsibility and I'm very excited and proud to be the next principal of Lester. So thank you.
Thank you to your family for being so patient throughout.
Only been three hours to go.
They are also 58 members.
I think we have some fair amount of Falcons in the crowd, right?
All right, we have a few items up for recommendation today. The first one is the amended 2020, 2021 school calendar. Is there a motion to approve the amended 2020 through 2021 school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
May I, just to, because I think we were talking about at the last meeting before this, we were going to end on a Monday, so we added two days and that is for the...
This is for this year's, this is this year's calendar, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, next year's was scheduled for a Monday, but we adjusted that.
Okay, okay, I'm confusing too. Okay, so, but it's adding two, two days because of the snow day and election day.
So this year was scheduled to end on Tuesday, the 8th. We are now going to be ending on Thursday, the 10th with tentative promotion dates for our eighth grade on the 9th, which is that Wednesday now.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
And member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the amended 2020 through 2021 school year as presented. We also have up for a vote, the 2020 through 2022 school calendar. Is there a motion to approve the 2021 through 2022 school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? This one did move from a Monday now to a Tuesday.
I was combining the two. Okay.
So what we did, assuming that we are still going to have to serve as polling places, Jane, it's March 15th, correct? I kept saying St. Patrick's Day, but it's March 15th. That's that Tuesday in March. We will take that day as a not-in-attendance day since we have to serve as a polling place, add that day to the end of the year, which now will end on a Tuesday rather than a Monday, which was certainly not ideal.
Thank you for flushing that.
Any other questions, comments? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the 2020 through 2022 school calendar as presented. Next up is the 2021 through 2022 school fees. Is there a motion to adopt the 2021 through 2022 school fees as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the 2020 through, 2021 through 2022 school fees as presented. We have a working cash fund abatement to the Capital Projects Fund. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution abating working cash funds to the Capital Projects Fund?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
And member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the resolution abating working cash fund to Capital Projects Fund. We have a working cash fund abatement to the Debt Service Fund Resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution abating working cash funds to the Debt Service Fund?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye. Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the resolution abating the working cash funds, abating working cash fund to the Debt Service Fund. Next up, we have a resolution for the honorable dismissal of teachers. Pursuant to Section 24-12 of the School Code of Illinois, 105 ILCS 5/24-12, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District, Number 58, DuPage County, Illinois, that the listed, that the teachers listed in the resolution for the honorable dismissal of teachers found an agenda item 14F on tonight's agenda in the board docs, that teachers shall be honorably dismissed at the end of the 2020 through 2021 school year because of the decision of the board to decrease the number of teachers employed. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the honorable dismissal of teachers.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I had, when we first got wind of this as a board back in March, I was privately stewing about this one, and I had a really good conversation with Jane at the, at the end of the last board meeting. And I know that it was in the update that the board received over the weekend, but if you wouldn't mind just going, this is something that's pretty, and I'll explain my, my reason for bringing this up, but this is something that's pretty important to me. If you wouldn't mind just explaining why we are riffing first year teachers as opposed to riffing teachers based on, on performance.
Do you want Jane or I to?
Either. I told Jane that to, to, that I would call on her, so if she, maybe she's looking forward to it, I don't know.
I'm sure she really is, yes.
Yeah, and when I spoke to Greg, this year, basically, the reduction in force, you would go through the categories. You would look at the evaluation ratings of staff, and then you would reduce by category. Our, for this particular school year, we do have an adjusted evaluation process in light of the pandemic and number of the pieces of the rubric that teachers should be evaluated under. We wouldn't be able to observe, or they wouldn't be able to accomplish, such as the collaboration between students and some of that higher level, some of those higher-level pieces that really, in what our model looks like, they wouldn't be able to attain. So part of what our joint, our paracommittee is required to do would be to talk about what those adjustments would be. In our joint agreement at the start of the year, we then did come to an agreement that for first-year staff, there would be a default rating of proficient, which is not, is not typical, and it's something that all school districts, folks to go through is this process of discussing what is that, what is the evaluation process going to look like. In any case, as we, when we have teachers with the same category, that same rating, you then would riff by seniority. So in effect, we are following those same procedures because by seniority, all our first-year people would come first. They would be at that lowest level of seniority. And so, you know, basically what Greg was sharing too is in future years, to look, to make sure that we're looking carefully at, we need that riff deadline to come after we have the evaluations, so that there, there may be a scenario where a teacher who has more years' experience would fall in a lower category than a, a brand-new first-year teacher. And that's, that's pretty much what he, and I spoke about is it's very important to be true to that process. With this year, because of the circumstances with all teachers falling in that same category, it does fall along.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I appreciate, just for the benefit of the entire board, I appreciate you coming up here and taking the time to explain that. I think it was eight to 10 years ago is when Senate Bill 7 passed, and that was when the law in Illinois changed, whereas you could do riffs based on performance instead of just on seniority. So before that, it was last and first out. And I was surprised when I came on as a board member and frustrated that I couldn't get the prior superintendent to agree with me that we shouldn't be doing last and first out, that we shouldn't just say, oh, well, if you're the, if you're the youngest person, you're the, you're the first person out the door if we have a riff. So that's when I saw this, I was, I was frustrated. But I really appreciate both Dr. Uzentis and Dr. Russell. I appreciate your efforts to, to change that paradigm and work and, and, and understand fully why you made the decisions this year to, in light of the COVID crisis, to take, take a pause in that. But I'm excited about moving forward on that. So thank you both very much.
And if any other member, this gets complicated really fast with the Senate Bill 7 and the, in the performance buckets and how you go through a riff and where people are certified. Jane and I would be happy to sit down with, with any member and give a more thorough review i- if needed, because like I said, this can get pretty complicated pretty fast. But the, the legislation that Greg referenced is something that we all support in this district, that everyone has a rigorous evaluation requirement that is fair to all of our staff. We believe that's very important. And then based on the overall evaluation, you get placed in a bucket, and then if a reduction of force is necessary, you go through the steps that way versus just purely on seniority with Senate Bill 7 got rid of years ago.
Thank you, Greg. Comment? Any other questions, comments? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the resolution regarding the honorable dismissal of teachers. All right, we have a couple bids tonight. The first one is the Pierce Downer roof replacement. Is there a motion to award a base bid, an alternate bid for the roof replacement project at Pierce Downer for a total cost of $1,203,850 to Allen's and Macon Roofing and Sheet Metal Inc.?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to award the base bid of the, an alternate bid for the roof replacement project at Pierce Downer for a total of cost of $1,203,850 to Allen's and Macon Roofing and Sheet Metal Inc. We also have a bid for Pierce Downer Mechanicals. Is there a motion to award the bid for mechanical upgrades at Pierce Downer to C. Esatelli Heating and Piping Contractors, Inc. for a base bid in alternates 2, 2A, 3, and 4 for a total of $468,800?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. Motion carried to award the bid for mechanical upgrades at Pierce Downer to C. Esatelli Heating and Pipe, Piping Contractors, Inc. for a base bid in alternates 2, 2A, 3, and 4 for a total of $468,800. We have a bid for 2021 through 2022 general supplies. Is there a motion to award a bid for general supplies to the Warehouse Direct, Inc. for an estimated cost of $21,633.78?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to award the bid for general office supplies to Warehouse Direct, Inc. for an estimated cost of $21,633.78. Last bid we have is for 2021 through 2022 art supplies. Is there a motion to award the bid for art supplies to Runco Office Supply for an estimated cost of $11,204.25?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to award the bid for art supplies to Runco Office Supply for an estimated cost of $11,204.25. We've got some announcements, so please take note of these dates. Tuesday, March 16th at 7:00 a.m. will be the Policy Committee meeting. It's taking place at the ASC and will resume. Monday, March 22nd at 6:00 p.m. will be the curriculum workshop that'll take place at O'Neill Middle School.
Is that time correct? I just thought I verified. Is it at 6:00 or is it at 7:00?
That's what I'm checking right now. Justin, it...
We have 7:00 on the other, on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, 7:00 o'clock.
All right, let me correct that. March 22nd at 7:00 p.m. will be the curriculum workshop at O'Neill Middle School.
Right, we're not all sick.
What?
Right, we're not all sick from the...
Yeah. All right, we will now go into closed session. The board will now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the employment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, 5 ILCS 122C1, and for the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purposes of the approval by the body of the minutes or the semi-annual review of minutes as mandated by Section 2.06. That's 5 ILCS 122C21.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Melissa, please go roll.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Samanti.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried. The board will now move into closed session. We'll take a short recess. We'll meet at 9:10 p.m.